Okay, we are live.
All right. Good evening, folks, and welcome to a special meeting of the City Council. Before we get going, I think probably most people remember, but this is the anniversary of Superstorm Sandy and Councilwoman Tristen is going to just say a few words.
Can you hear me okay? I didn't do them check?
Yep.
Great. So as everyone knows, today is the eighth year since Superstorm Sandy. It's also hard not to remember as it's constantly raining outside today and the wind is whipping. And over the weekend, we're going to have a full moon. Today, our city looks different. Our homes are raised and words like mitigation, sustainability, and flood protection are part of our vocabulary. I know many of us still continue to advocate for funding and support from the state and feds. We call Consumer Affairs and the DA's office to get updates on those that not only mismanaged the projects, that they bought us financial ruin and emotional devastation we didn't see coming. Yet, we continue to move forward. We did so together. In light of the unprecedented times we now find ourselves in, I'm asking you to remember that we're all on this barrier island together. We hear your frustrations that things aren't normal. They're not. Not unlike Sandy, we are going to have to be adapt to new ways so we don't leave anyone behind alone. So thank you, Long Beach, for looking out for each other, being understanding as our nation and global community clash with COVID-19 as we weather more storms together. Thank you, everyone, for this time. President Bendo.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, why don't we get going then?
Okay. Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, October 29th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Delurie.
Present.
Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Tristen.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Corporation Council Simone Freeman will now have a salute to the flag.
Simone, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So just so everyone's aware, as this is a special meeting, there isn't a good and welfare at the end. We just do the items that are on the agenda and that's it. So there's no of the normal city manager report and things like that. So with that, why don't we get rolling?
Okay. First off, Items 4 and Item 7 have been taken off the calendar. Item 1 is a resolution adopting a capital asset policy for the City of Long Beach.
Okay, we have James from CMA. The policies were written by staff and CMA to, for especially for finance, actually all of them. But Dave Enick is not on.
Yeah, she just texted me and I told her to try again.
Okay. So James, you want to talk first about the capital asset policy?
Absolutely. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Keeps saying I'm muted, but.
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, the purpose of the capital asset policy is just, you know, essentially to establish principles relating to the accounting of the city's, you know, capital assets. There's a number of different tangible properties that the city obviously owns, including streets, buildings, parks, recreational facilities, sewers, vehicles, and other types of small equipment. So the, you know, essentially the purpose again of this policy is just to make sure that those items are, you know, appropriately inventoried and taken care of by the city. In the policy, it identifies capitalization thresholds as to, you know, what levels of assets will be both recorded and depreciated by the city. And it outlines, you know, methods for doing that. It outlines inventory tracking for the different assets of the city, including, you know, what should be inventoried, descriptions of the capital assets, location of it, documenting any types of warranty information, conditions or rating reports, the properties, any impairments of the properties. So the numbers of different items that are listed there. Assets that exceed those thresholds will be given a categorized useful life as far as their classification for the depreciation. There's a list of those different items on page number three of that policy. There are policies relating to donations of capital assets as well as assets that are then provided to city employees. Leased equipment and other types of assets are also included within the policy and residual value. There's this next, I'm sorry.
Ms. Gaden, have we, did we have a capital asset policy before this?
Can you hear me? Okay. As far, I'm not quite sure. We couldn't find one. Ena, do you recall? I don't recall seeing one.
No.
We create, that's why we created this one.
So I don't have.
I'm not aware of any capital asset.
I find that completely unacceptable and embarrassing for a $100 million a year organization, just on its operating budget to not have a capital asset policy. I'm disgusted and I'm very proud of this administration for having it, for instituting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the other important elements that was incorporated into this document was the disposition of capital assets, essentially, you know, how they will be sold. And you'll see that that kind of follows the tail end, you know, pages five and six of the, of the policy.
Does anyone have any questions about the capital asset policy? Okay.
All right, hearing no other questions from the council. Ena, did you have anything to add?
Um, no, I think that James did a fine job at the introducing it.
Okay. Dave, do we have any questions from the public?
Yes, we do. We have Roy Lester.
Okay.
Roy, go ahead.
Hello. Okay. What a wonderful night, guys, huh? Um, a couple of questions. The definition of the capital assets, you have vehicles, but then you have capital assets. They aren't considered capital assets if they're under $5,000 established. Is that brand new? In other words, if a car, at a certain point, a car becomes worth less than 5,000, then it goes into the 1,000 category, the formalized inventory system? Is that correct? Or is it from the beginning?
It's from the beginning.
Okay. So if, do we have any vehicles that are under 5,000 initial cost?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. And on inventory that's under $1,000, that's just up, that's just up.
Roy, you keep breaking up.
I'm sorry. The, when it comes to the inventory worth less than $1,000, that's, if it's $1,000 in excess of 1,000, it's under the formalized inventory system. Under $1,000, that is strictly up to the department heads? That's the only inventory?
So when we purchase equipment or any other kind of capital assets at the city, we expense it. And when something needs capitalization or otherwise, other words, it's an asset with the purchase price of over $5,000, we capitalize it and depreciate it. So it's not, it's in a system, but it's not being depreciated, capitalized and depreciated. Does that make sense?
No. How is it tracked? Let's say, let's say you buy a, and I know in the old days shows my age, you buy a typewriter for $250. How is that tracked?
It's tracked as a purchase in a system. So if you wanted to know if you bought a typewriter, let's say, you would have to go into the expenditures of that fiscal period and search on the, either the vendor or if you know which account it hit, that's how you would locate it. The purchase is in the system. It's not like it's outside of the system. It's just not being depreciated.
Right, right. A typewriter for $250 would not be a capital asset. Therefore, it would not be tracked in the asset system. It would be expensed.
Right. But what I'm saying is.
So basically, so basically, a typewriter is not a capital asset, so it's not expensed. So it doesn't need to be in the system. That's the answer to your question.
But, but the other things that are under $1,000, those are.
Are not capital assets and therefore they're not tracked in the capital asset system.
Well, it's right in here under inventory tracking, Karen.
Then Ena can.
Right under inventory, look at the, the heading, inventory tracking. You're talking about, you're talking about things that are under $1,000 that are.
There are things that we purchase, like if we buy a computer that's under $1,000, we will track that computer because we want to know how many computers we have.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
Capital, capital assets are things that we depreciate, not, capital asset policy is for the assets that we actually depreciate. There are other assets that we do keep track of, but they do not go into a capital asset system because they are below the threshold.
But if you're talking about the inventory tracking, you're not depreciating, yes. So this inventory tracking is part of your capital asset policy draft.
The cap, the tracking, the inventory tracking, we have to track any capital assets over $5,000. Those assets are depreciated.
I understand that, Donna. I'm talking about the ones.
Wait a minute, Roy, hold on.
Yeah.
Anything under $5,000, we keep track of it, however, is not in the same inventory system. So the capital asset policy is only a policy for the inventory that we track over $5,000.
Then why do you have in the policy, why do you have in the policy of the capital asset policy, the inventory tracking?
Because we.
Do you understand what I'm saying, Roy?
Roy, that's your time.
It's, all it's doing is delineating, all it's doing is delineating what you do for this stuff that's less than $5,000. That's the track. It's just, it's just defining how that's for informational purposes. Okay, well, anyway, Dave, anyone else have their hands raised?
No, that's it right now.
Okay. Why don't we move on then to the next item?
The next item is the capital budget policy.
Okay, so item number two is resolution adopting a capital budget policy for the City of Long Beach.
James, would you like to start?
Absolutely. So, you know, the capital budget policy essentially is to establish principles relating to planning, maintenance, and replacement of, of capital assets. Obviously, the city's made some, you know, rather large investments in its streets, buildings, parks, recreational facilities, sewers, the water facility, including vehicles and again, other, other types of equipment. So this policy, you know, is essentially relates to the planning of how that equipment will be maintained, replaced, and it sets forth, you know, different, different policies to ensure that that, you know, that that occurs. These are typically, the policies are identify different funding sources, plans whether the, you know, the equipment's going to be purchased from city funds or if it's going to be perhaps borrowed for, or if there's going to be, you know, some sort of grant or state aid that would be utilized to, to purchase or fix or replace the, the equipment. So the policy itself sets parameters around, you know, how the budget itself will be prepared.
Okay. Any questions from the council? All right. Dave, any questions from the public?
Not at this time.
Okay. Let's move on to item three.
Item three is a resolution adopting a debt management policy for the City of Long Beach.
I assume that's you again, James?
Oh, sorry. Yes, that's James. I was having some problems with my computer.
All right. So the debt management policy certainly is a very important policy. The city has, you know, debt obligations that are outstanding and, you know, debt is issued in a strategic fashion on an annual basis. So the purpose of this policy is to make certain that the city is operating within its allowable debt limits and that it's following, you know, set procedures for the issuance of its debt. It discusses both short-term and long-term borrowing, how debt will be structured. It includes discussions of the utilization of something called a period of probable usefulness. That is essentially the timeframe in which you can finance a tangible piece of equipment or project. It discusses the different methods of debt financing, you know, competitive financing versus negotiated financings, the method of which the city will sell its debt obligations. Again, it discusses the, the debt limit. By law, the city is only allowed to issue a certain level of debt. So there's discussions in the policy as to how that debt limit is calculated. In here, the capital budget is also again mentioned and that, you know, the debt component of the capital budget will be considered along with the debt management policy. It discusses how bond proceeds will be invested. It discusses the repayment of debt obligations. It discusses refunding of outstanding long-term debt obligations. Long-term obligations from time to time are able to be refunded or refinanced in order to achieve debt service savings. It discusses credit rating strategies similar to, you know, any person. The city does have a credit rating. So there are some parameters around its credit rating and setting up strategies to both preserve and enhance that rating. It discusses something that's called continuing disclosure. When the city issues long-term obligations or even sometimes short-term obligations, it will make a pledge to provide investors with certain types of continuing disclosure. Although they provide you with the funds, they, those debt obligations can continue to be traded in the secondary market. So the city's making a pledge to provide investors with updates to inform their investment decisions. And that's essentially the, the general parameters of, of the debt management policy.
The one thing I want to say is that there are a couple of typos that are in the debt management policy, but it does not change the policy at hand. And so where we notice the typos, we will fix those.
Okay. Any questions from the council members? All right. Anybody got their hand up, Dave?
Roy Lester.
Okay, welcome back.
Yes, I'll get my questions out before I get cut off. Okay, the city shall use short-term borrowing to finance operating needs, except in the case of financial necessity. Is there any definition of financial necessity other than we need the money? That's number one. Number two is the, we have a, we can borrow up to 7% of the five-year average taxable full valuation of property. What does that mean taxable full valuation? Is that the tax that can be collected or is it taxable property? And what is the amount of that full valuation, the taxable full valuation?
Sure. So I could, I could probably jump in. So the, so the debt limit, it's, it's 7% of the, the full valuation of, of property. So that's calculated, you know, the assessed value is, you know, calculated on an annual basis. There's a equalization rate that's provided by the state that calculated into the assessed value, which you're able to then calculate a full valuation. You look at five years valuation, you take 7% of, of that average.
What is it? That's the question.
I don't have it right in front of me, but I can, if you bear with me for one moment, I can, I can get it for you.
So long as it's not out of my tongue.
Let me answer your, your other question in the, in the interim. And your other question was relating to the, what, what was your question again?
Is there any definition of financial necessity in order to borrow money to finance operating costs?
Well, I mean, ultimately, it would be a decision that the council would make. Anytime you're issuing, you know, debt, there's a formal resolution that needs to be adopted, you know, by the council. That's called, you know, bond resolution. And within that, it discusses any of the parameters around what's being financed. It will include discussions of the useful life. So that would have to be formally adopted. And there's generally processes that have to go through after the, after the adoption of that.
And we know that, but you're, according to this policy, you're limited to only accept in the case of financial necessity. This is for borrowing for operating needs, not for capitals or anything like that. Is there any definition of financial necessity?
Well, I mean, it would be a decision that would have to be made by the city. So if, for instance, there's a gap in cash flow and a, you know, a tax anticipation note or a revenue anticipation note needs to be issued, you know, that would constitute a financial necessity.
So if you don't have money, it's financial necessity. If you don't, if, in other words, you can't pay off your, your payouts at the end of the year, that's a financial necessity, I would assume. The question on the, the property, so exempt property that's valued, is that part of the 7%?
Hang on, I'm trying to pull open your assessed values. I believe the exempt values are not included in that. I believe it's just the full taxable value.
So it's only taxable property, the average full valuation of taxable property?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure about. All right. And you don't know what that is?
Trying to pull down. I'll tell you in just one moment. I have the document open here.
It's, James, it's probably the total of all total full of assessed value by property class.
It, it is, yes. So, okay, so right now, the debt limit is roughly $370 million. What the city has outstanding, I mean, this was calculated back in April, what I have open right now, but it was about $100 million, 101.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. Dave, anyone else have their hand up?
No, that was it.
Okay. Let's move on to item five.
Item four has been taken off the calendar. Item five is a resolution adopting an information technology policy for the City of Long Beach.
Okay, James.
All right, hang on, I'm just opening it up. All right. So the IT policy. All right. So IT especially now is a very important function in the, in the world of COVID. So the, the purpose of the IT policy is to protect data in the city's IT systems and to make sure that efforts are being taken for cybersecurity to make sure that there's no types of breaches. So there's a number of policy statements within the policy. There's a couple of them, you know, on an annual basis, it's requiring a cyber, cybersecurity self-assessment, which would be, you know, completed by the city in order to make sure that the systems are both safe and secure. There's parameters in here advising that, you know, unused computers should be locked. There should be proper inventories maintained of, of IT equipment. Separate employees will need to immediately return any types of IT systems or digital information they may have. So again, this policy, the basis of this policy is to make sure that all information in the system itself is protected and safeguarded from, you know, potential breaches.
Donna, did we have an IT policy like this prior to tonight?
Um, to be honest, I don't believe we had any of the policies that we are presenting tonight prior to us presenting them. So I was going to say, I don't think we had, I don't know of a debt management policy either. And so this was one of the things that we are trying to build a, a book for, a policy book.
So just, just, just in case I haven't made it clear, I find this utterly, completely unacceptable that we did not have these policies in force until, until tonight's meeting. And I'm embarrassed for the city that we didn't have this. It's completely, completely unacceptable. Thank you.
I have a comment, a question, actually. On page one, section 31A, it reads, "To protect its data and information, the city will, on an annual basis, the IT department will perform a cybersecurity self-assessment, which will," and then it goes into, "determine what personal, private, and sensitive information the city collects." We may want to consider just looping in corp counsel as part of that determination. I don't know if that's something we could revisit, but just to make a determination as to what would be appropriate to collect from personnel regarding personal, private, and sensitive information.
Okay.
Well, I, I would just say there should be no personal or no personal information on a city email.
I think maybe we should leave that to corp counsel. That's the whole point of my suggestion. Sometimes personal information is required. So as long as it's kept secure, which is the purpose, why don't we leave that to, maybe corp counsel can.
You are the lawyer. You are the lawyer, so you're.
I'm the councilman tonight. A lawyer is here. She can.
No, I agree with Scott because it's sometimes for civil service or HR purposes, we do have to transmit personal information among in between. So yes, I mean, that probably is a good idea. And as confidential, employees and council, our department usually is the go-to department for the HR, you know, assessments and things like that. So I would agree with Scott.
All right. So might that require an amendment to Part A there?
Maybe just.
And if so, well, what I'm getting at is do we need to table it to, in case it needs to be amended, which we don't, wouldn't have the right words right now.
Unless we just put in at that section A, determine, comma, with consultation of corporation counsel, comma, what personal, private, and sensitive information. Now we're corrected.
I second.
I didn't, I didn't move. I'm suggesting.
I agree with that. I mean.
Okay. So let's just add that to, to that. That would be great.
All right. So, but we, I'm assuming we have to do that as an amendment then to this.
And then we vote as amended.
So Scott, you want to make?
You want me to do that now? Unless there are any other questions, and we also should hear from the public if they have anything.
Well, there's usually discussion after an amendment is seconded.
I didn't move.
No, no, no. But what I'm saying is if, if you make the amendment and it's seconded, under Robert rules, that's when a discussion takes place on the amendment.
Okay. So I'm going to make the motion that at page one, section 31A, it reads as follows, determine, comma, with consultation of corporation counsel, comma, and then it goes back into the text as written. and then it goes back into the text as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, now-
One second, I'm just writing this down. Okay.
Well, before we vote then, so now there's discussion on the amendment, if anybody-
No, well, usually we vote on, on the amendment and then, because you start to vote on the item at the end.
I, yes, but under Robert's rules, after an amendment is seconded, then if there's any discussion on the amendment-
Does anyone have any comments?
Right. I'm assuming not, but-
If not, then you don't have to worry about it.
Right. Okay.
Okay, voting on, on the, to amend item five, Councilmember Delory?
Yes, on the amendment.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right, oh wait, we do have our hand raised, we have, Mr. Lester has his hand raised.
Well, I'm, is, is, that would, I'm assuming that's for the actual, when we get to public comment for the-
For this item.
For the item, right. So any other questions or comments from the council on the item? Okay, bring in Mr. Lester.
Okay, Roy, go ahead and unmute.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Okay, just a, a observation, I don't think annual basis is often enough to perform a self-assessment. I know in our office, we do it about every month, just because of the way cybersecurity is these days. So, you know, listen, I'm not an expert, but I don't think it's enough. And looking what happened to the county of Nassau this year and they, they're a lot more sophisticated, I, I think it's something we should worry about. The other thing is, do we have off-site storage for, as a backup?
Yes.
Okay, so we, if somebody said, you know, we're going to freeze your system unless you pay us ransomware, like they've done to quite a few municipalities, we could basically tell them to, to, you know, blow off because we can just take, download from our on, off-site system?
Donna, you want me to answer that?
Yeah, someone, someone-
You're the closest IT we have here.
Yes, Dave.
Yes, yes, we, we have, we have, we have backups in place to take care of a situation like that.
Great, okay, thanks.
Okay, any other comments from the public, Dave?
No, that's it.
Okay, let's move on to item six.
Item six is resolution adopting an information technology disaster recovery policy for the city of Long Beach.
Which kind of goes to what Roy was just talking about. So.
Okay, so this is a, essentially a piggyback of the information technology policy. You know, the scope of this is just, you know, what do you do if there's an unplanned IT disruption? How does the city, you know, maintain its services? How does it provide its services and how does it get itself back and up and running as quickly as possible? There are backup procedures that are listed in the policy. There's discussions of the off-site backups within this policy. There's a continuity plan that's outlined, and then again, this policy kind of discusses the, you know, the roles, responsibilities of, of what, you know, should be done in the event that there is an unplanned, you know, shutdown of, of the equipment.
All right, any questions from the council? All right, Dave, any questions from the public?
Nope.
All right, then I guess item seven's removed, so-
Item seven has been taken off the calendar, so we'll go on to the voting.
Right, and just before we go to the voting, so just everyone understands, so what you're seeing here tonight is, you know, the, the city's now starting to, for lack of a better term, codify or put in writing policies and procedures, so there's standard practices and, and that are followed going forward for all the staff, so things are done with consistency and in a, in a defined manner. They, as you're hearing, basically didn't exist in the past, so now what we're trying to do is start to formalize this stuff. This is just the beginning, there's going to be more coming. So, so there will be more of these coming in future meetings. So, okay, Dave, let's move on.
Okay, all right, so item one is a resolution adopting a capital asset policy for the city of Long Beach. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item two is a resolution adopting a capital budget policy for the city of Long Beach. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will. President Bendo?
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston? Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item three is a resolution adopting a debt management policy for the city of Long Beach. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Okay.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item four has been taken off the calendar. Item five is resolution adopting an information technology policy for the city of Long Beach. Who would you just move the adoption of this item as amended?
Will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
And finally, item six is a, excuse me, resolution adopting an information technology disaster recovery policy for the city of Long Beach. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston?
First century, yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Triston?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes. Okay, thanks for joining us, folks. Like I said, since this was a special meeting, there's no good and welfare tonight. We thank you for joining us, but we'll be back on Wednesday, not Tuesday, because Wednesday's election day, so we'll be back on, Tuesday's election day. We'll be back on Wednesday for the city council meeting on Wednesday. And don't forget to vote on Tuesday if you have it, or vote, if you're not voting early. Get out there and vote. So everyone, have a good night, be safe for Halloween and we'll see you.